Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of Waterville City Council. Anybody who would like an agenda, they are in the file folder hanging off the wall up the back. And before we get started on anything, I will present to you leaders of the board.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and before we get started on anything, if I could have Arthur and Connie Terrell come up front. I have a proclamation to read. I'm very happy Connie has taught two of my children, and they're big individuals, and this is a really exciting thing to do. Whereas Arthur and Connie have been lifelong Waterville residents growing up in the city's North End, and whereas about fifteen years ago they acquired a number of properties in the Tyconic Street neighborhood, and as a result rehabilitated all of the apartment units in the area to provide safe, clean, and affordable housing for many residents who are elderly or on fixed incomes, and whereas along with their family, they worked tirelessly in keeping the neighborhood attractive and a place where residents can enjoy a place called home. And whereas they often work behind the scenes to help others less fortunate, and whereas their commitment to community is especially evident in the North End area of the city, whereas Arthur and Connie are humble individuals who personify what the spirit of the merit of reward is truly about, now therefore I, Nicholas Isgro, Mayor of Waterville, on behalf of the City Council, hereby recognize and endorse Arthur and Connie Terrell as the 2015 Spirit of America Volunteers of the Year, and call upon our fellow residents to pay tribute to them as true credits to our community.
I think before we rush off to the next item of community notes, I'd like to really share a conversation that took place earlier today between myself and Connie. I shared with them that twenty-five years ago, when I first began working and started to take the first steps to look at homelessness in the greater Waterville area. When we had moved on and it was time for a place to actually secure, it was Tyconic Street, and that we went to and spent a number, a long period of time making a difference. During that period, it has been amazing for not only myself, but so many other people. We're constantly talking about neighborhoods, renovations, certain parts of the greater Waterville community. This is a couple who have, I love it, the fact that the heart and soul of the North End is the Levine Building, where they stayed there as they opened their shop on Waterville's Main Street, and that they have over the years worked tirelessly to really change the North End. And a lot of times, as you and I were talking today, you've got an awful lot, the insides of the buildings are what take a lot of time, and then we get to see the experience. But I think the best part of today's discussion was the fact that Arthur Terrell Jr. has come back to Waterville, and he is working at making a difference in these buildings with his parents. Their daughter, Joey, has also made a commitment to the North End in purchasing one of the buildings. Talk about a family that, we're talking several generations that are making a difference, and it's one of those steps. We often have the opportunity to talk about the South End and Center, which does outstanding work, and here we have the North End. You couldn't pick a better family to make sure that, so, we thank you for...
We're honored, thank you so much.
Oh, we are very honored. We're enriched.
And as someone who gets to work with people like Arthur and Connie, I'd just like to say that the best way I can think of describing them is as a quiet presence. They're very humble and stay behind the scenes, but they're always there, they've always been there in the North End, and we all hope you'll continue to stay there. Thank you.
Next up is community notes, and this is a time where if anybody has something they want to talk about that is not on the agenda, they can come up and do so now, and they want you to get to the podium and tell us who you are. I want to do this now.
Hi, I'm Jacque Dupois, and I am Mayor of Water Street in Waterville, and I'm just here representing the South End Neighborhood Association to make a quick announcement about the annual cleanup that's happening this Saturday in the South End, thanks to the generous support of the city, and, I mean, Bruce doing pizza for our volunteers, and Central Main Disposal, and the Colby Volunteers, the football team, are going to be getting together this Saturday starting at ten o'clock outside of the South End Team Center and cleaning up the neighborhood now that all the, everything's kind of melted and dried up. We hope. So that's what we'll be meeting, and let's be provided for our volunteers, we can take a lot of bulky items, we'll be asking for donations to dispose of those items, but again, if you know a neighbor that doesn't have their own transportation to take their trash, bulky items like, Matt just was going to purchase another thing, or isn't able to physically lift it, let them know and contact us on Facebook or me at my cellphone, all the contact information is available online, and we'll do what we can to try to help those folks out. And then the other thing that I want to announce, since we won't be meeting again next week, is that the following Saturday on May 2nd, South End Neighborhood Association will be holding its annual bike swap. So we had our repair this past Saturday, and we repaired a couple dozen bikes, which was fantastic, and we've got around thirty or so new bikes to donate. And so that will be happening on May 2nd at nine o'clock till ten thirty, and adult must be accompanied, children must be accompanied by an adult in order to get a bike. We'll also have helmets, and we'll be doing a safety demonstration. So again, we hope that lots of people will come out, and if you know a child in need who would like a bike, please encourage them to bring them down to the South End Team Center on May 2nd. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes?
I wanted to, I'm really excited, a few months ago I was approached by some Colby College seniors who wanted to come tonight and share the best in time bike events to come, and they have a really neat idea for our downtown, so I wanted to introduce both Professor Adam Howard this year with Alyssa, Kay, and Ally.
Welcome.
So Ally has a, well, I'll give her that. So, as you all know, Colby and Thomas have existed alongside one another in Waterville for over a hundred years, well, probably longer than that. So our students studying education at Colby, we are interested in learning more about the relationship between the two institutions, and over the past year we have done a lot of research between the two about the two little arts institutions in Waterville, and we found that the relationship is strained, it's not the best. So, we now seniors are passionate and excited about devoting our last semester to connecting these two institutions by bringing students from Thomas and Colby in a community art project, and so we've been in contact with people in downtown Waterville such as me, Ruby, and Jennifer Olsen, and we would like to create a art mural on a wall, and we have a few ideas for spaces that we would want to use, and we thought that this would be a great idea, a great way to bring different people and diverse backgrounds together through art, and this is the perfect place to do it because we are all students that call Waterville our home, so it would be awesome to have a mural that unifies both colleges.
So we passed out our proposal and also our current sketch for the mural to all of you, which we're super excited about bringing the two colleges together and the things that value that they both share.
So you've been talking some building orders since then?
Yeah, that was the process.
And the mural was a collaborative kind of effort between Colby students and Thomas students, as well as these downtown projects. They came up with these ideas to kind of fuse the two kind of symbols of the colleges together and then kind of represent it. So now we're in the process of finding a space downtown, talking to business owners and hopefully it's gonna happen real soon, so we wanted to share this with the council of Waterville Community.
What's the mural just like? Can you describe it?
It's like Colby, Thomas, students.
So on the mural, at the top we have Colby's model, and then we also have Thomas's model, with both emblems in the middle, which are kind of fused together. And then along the sides you have two recognizable buildings from each college and show students coming down from both to symbolize that they're coming together and doing share activities and things that they all love.
In the middle we have all the clubs that the students at both institutions really love and are really active in.
Excellent.
Thank you.
What I loved about this idea when they approached me about it was, maybe they're seniors, who a lot of them are possibly going to leave the state from that home, or have a job somewhere else now, and they're like staying here, and they want to do something that would kind of label a touch here in Waterville, so they will come back and hopefully visit this mural, and it would give them kind of a piece of downtown, and it's a really neat time, you know, I was telling them about that we're in the process of really taking some big steps coming up, so it was a really neat time to get Waterville creative in the city, so thank you for doing that. And I love the fact that young people are coming to Waterville and wanting to do things here, because we are, we are working really hard to create that bridge, so there isn't this, not only the bridge between Thomas and Colby, but into Waterville, and so it's really neat to see that you guys are coming into Waterville and wanting to make it a really, put your own kind of touch on it, so I'm very excited.
Thank you for listening.
I'd like to say this has been a long time coming, it's nice to see the colleges want to be part of one of these, not as distant, you know, Colby, Telus, and Deseret Road, so thank you for doing this, very nice experience.
Anybody else for community notes?
I just wanted to touch on, I've been approached by a few community members in downtown, business owners, about now that the snow is gone and the warmer weather is here, a touch of vandalism happened over the weekend, I believe at SBS some glass was broken, and it's not any different than most cities across the country in this kind of activity happens, but I wanted just as the councilor for this board to let you know that it isn't being ignored, it's not something that we want to accept, and I started conversations with the mayor and city manager of some solutions and taking some steps, you know, with Jen Ellison and Waterville Main Street, and really trying to give business owners a voice, because I, I think that's really the key, is making them feel as though they have a voice in their community, and that we're not going to, just like with people dumping waste and that being a discussion, we're not going to accept this kind of activity in downtown. And I really just wanted to let you know that I did draft some solutions and some ideas on how we could give you a voice and make you feel empowered in your community and in your business, and so we're going to be working on that and it's not going away, and to let those in downtown know that it's not going to be accepted, and the type of activity in downtown is not going to be accepted. And so we are going to work really hard with the businesses and with the police and with the city leaders and business leaders to make sure that you have that voice and that we can try and make a difference in downtown. We need a different culture in downtown, and that might mean some changes with the nightlife in downtown, because it's really unfair for us to have businesses in downtown putting a lot of work and energy into your shore and making Waterville a better place, and then at one o'clock in the morning this type of activity is happening. So I just wanted to put that on the table, that we're not being ignored, and I hear you, and we're going to try really hard to make a difference.
Anybody else for community notes? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does everyone have a motion to pass the consent agenda? Any discussion? All those in favor? And there is no unfinished business, and we'll move on to new business, Resolution 512015.
A resolution providing for authorization to issue government obligation securities to public coffers.
Move to adopt?
This is not anything new. The city has done this type of tax exempt financing before, once with Delta ambulance about two years, three years ago, most recently last year with Inland Hospital, but we didn't, they decided at the very end not to go through with it. But this tax exempt financing, today's Sentinel article did a virga job in explaining that municipalities under IRS laws have up to ten million total in tax exempt financing, and we can lend our name to institutions, educational institutions or medical institutions, for instance, to come under our tax exempt status, and that's what Thomas College is asking to do. Bill Lee has spent quite a bit of time looking through this, along with Dan Pittman, who's here representing Thomas, so I'm going to ask Dan to get up and explain a little bit about the rest of it, but it's certainly something that we from the administration support.
Good evening, my name is Dan Pittman, I'm an attorney with Peabody in Bangor, and as Mike says, Thomas College has a purpose to be fulfilled adoring for it last year. To do that, to finance that, they took out a short-term loan. Now that they've completed construction, they know what the costs came in, and they're ready to go out with permanent financing, and they talked to Bangor Savings Bank about how to do that. Bangor Savings looked over their applications, said their credit's good, this business model looks good, everything's great, we'd be happy to go into this loan relationship with you. And by the way, because you're an educational institution, Bangor Savings has had a lot of luck with something called Municipal Securities Approval Program in the past, and it might be able to, Thomas College, to really preferential interest rates on its borrowing. So they suggested that Thomas get in touch with me, and I was going to hear something. I propose to Thomas that they're looking at something called Municipal Securities Approval Program. This is a program under main law that allows municipalities to support local charitable educational health organizations by acting basically as an intermediary to issue loans. The important thing from your perspective, or one of the important things from your perspective is, even though it's formally approved by the city, even though it's issued by the city, it's not a debt of the city, it's not repayable by the city under any circumstances, there's no way that it can affect the taxpayers of the city or property of the city, it doesn't even show up on your books. And I don't want to get into too much of the history here, but the idea here is Congress, for federal purposes, that exempt organizations can borrow at tax exempt rates, but they can't do it on their own, they need a sponsor, and this, this program allows cities and corporates to act as a sponsor. Now, there are two parts to the process, first of all, the city, well, one part is that the city has to act, the city has to authorize the borrowing, the other part is that the finance authority of Maine has a sort of supervisory power, it overlooks the entire deal. And tonight I'm here to discuss the finance authority and the part of it. In future meetings, we've been talking about setting up time for a hearing and then for the city to issue bonding orders at the next couple of meetings, but tonight all we're asking is that you pass what's called an inducement resolution, and all that does is tell the finance authority, the city's serious about this, we're thinking about it, we're interested in it, it doesn't commit you to anything, it doesn't, it's not binding, except to tell the finance authority, go ahead, look into this, you're not going to be wasting your time, we're taking the process seriously. I'd be happy to take any questions, of course, but again, the key is that it's not a debt of the city, and that if you go ahead tonight, we're not really obligated to issue anything except for letting me make an application to the finance authority. These resolutions also authorize the city manager to enter what's called an inducement agreement, which is just a formal agreement that we give the finance authority, and they also, there's a part of the application to the finance authority capacity signed by the city. I've shared all of this with the city and your bond attorney and your regular attorney.
What's the amount?
It's, I don't know, it's seen seven point eight five million, it'll wind up being a little bit less than I probably would have said.
What's the city's maximum amount we can...
So this is a little, there are two types of tax exempt debt from the city. There's plain vanilla tax exempt debt, and you can issue as much of that as you want, if you feel the need to issue a hundred million dollars of that, you can. There's a special additional kind called bank qualified debt, and I don't want to get, at the risk of getting too technical, the difference is, so if you're a bank and you lend money to just any, let's say, a taxable business, somebody wants to pull the factor, they pay you interest, and you take that interest, you report it on your taxes, and you pay tax on that, but you also, whatever charges, whatever costs you have in, in carrying that debt on your books, you get to deduct those costs. Standard garden variety taxes have debt, you pay your interest to the bank, the bank doesn't include this, doesn't have to pay tax on it, but it doesn't get to deduct those carrying costs. The ten million dollar limit that we're talking about is what's called bank qualified debt. That's a special kind that Congress said, we want small borrowers to be able to get the attention of banks, so we can give them a little bit of extra juice so that the banks are interested in dealing with them. So this is a special kind, they can only issue ten million a year of, where the interest is excludable, and also the bank can deduct its interest, so it lowers the borrowing cost of the bank. Waterville can issue up to ten million dollars of that a year. Interestingly however, this issuance is sort of outside of those rules, because as I said, Thomas already took on the debt due to this short-term debt, and now they're refinancing it. And in the rules on that ten million dollar limitation, it says, well, for purposes of calculating your ten million dollars a year, we're going to exclude debt that's being refinanced because you're not really borrowing that this year. So in this case, the entire seven point eight five million would sort of not be counted for that ten million dollar limitation, wouldn't have any implications for that to the majority.
And I guess I should have mentioned that our debt, our bond issue, that we acted on and awaiting the results on bids for the interest rate, that has to count towards ten million. So we take our ten million minus the three or so that we've committed to, and that leaves the balance for Thomas.
And that excludes power refinances?
Yes.
And you said that's an annual?
That's correct.
Yeah.
But if I could clarify just a bit, when we first looked at this deal, we were proposing that the town would issue two different series of notes. The first would be bank qualified up to the ten million dollar limit, and the second would be tax exempt but not bank qualified to the extent that it takes you over your ten million dollar limit. The interesting development that just came up in a conversation with the town board, the city board, was what I was saying about the refunding funds not counting for your ten million dollar limit, so I don't think that that mechanism will actually be necessary. Now, all this is stuff that we can discuss in, when you're considering the actual issuance of this bond, if anyone needs it, but that's, I think, an important factor, and highlights a few things.
And Mike, even if it's disqualified toward that ten million limit, we don't have any other anticipated needs for this kind of funding anyway, do we? Not in 2015. So this is year, calendar year by calendar year. January one, 2006, there's another ten million of that, and we don't have plans in 2006. That's right, except for the Delta ambulance bill, we really haven't done much of this, have we? The Delta ambulance one is done. Yeah, right. Right. So other than that... That doesn't count against us, Frank. I understand what I'm saying, as an example of doing it before, we don't usually do this kind of agreeing to do it. Well, we've, this will be the third one that's come up in the last five years. Inland Hospital. Oh yeah, Inland Hospital, we didn't go through though, right? Right. But Delta was the first, and then Inland and Thomas.
If I may, this is a program that's been around for a long time, but it's not been terribly common until recently, not a lot of borrowers have been interested in doing it, in large part because of Mahifa, the main health and education facilities finance authority, used to handle a lot of this business, but the governor has more or less shut them down, and more and more institutions looking to borrow, looking for alternatives, and I found this program. So there hasn't been a lot of these done statewide until the last few years, but they have been done in the last, I don't know, couple of years, with quite a bit of success throughout the state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and just a reminder, Patty handed out a revised copy from the one you got in your agenda, so the motion, if you so inclined, should be to approve the copy distributed to nothing.
Okay, there's no further discussions, I will call for a vote.
We need to move to amended version, please.
Okay, we have such a motion.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
And now we move it as amended?
Move as amended.
All those in favor?
A resolution providing for a focal of lease for city parking lot. Being resolved by the City Council of City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows, that a lease providing for thirty parking spaces be approved for the city-owned parking lot at the assembly and the front street as shown on the attached map. This lease is to be executed with Paul Boghossian, Les Or, representing the Hathaway Creative Center at a price of twenty-five dollars per lot per year for a five-year period. That Les Or will be responsible for the enforcement of parking restrictions within the lease area, and the city, Lessee, to be responsible for summer and winter maintenance of the lot as in the past. Remaining spaces in the lot will remain open for use by the public.
Move to adopt.
As a brief introduction, I just wanted to let the council know this is a topic that's been discussed with Mr. Boghossian and the city for quite a while now, and the request before you, really from his side, is for fifty spaces. My recommendation to you, if you decide to do it, is no more than thirty. I did include a memo with your agenda copy along with the map, so hopefully that'll help, and at this point, I think it'd be more appropriate to ask Paul Boghossian to talk about it from here.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks for the opportunity to talk to you today about this. The genesis of this lease started maybe three years ago, when we first started talking about redeveloping the buildings next to the Hathaway, which is the CMP building and Martin's building. And it just seemed appropriate to bring it up now because we're getting ready to start on the second building on the CMP building, and there isn't enough parking lot site to take care of those two buildings, unless we build a parking deck in the Lafayette Parking Lot on the corner of Spring and Water Street, and that's probably a long way away, many, many dollars away, so this seemed like an expedient way to address some of the parking need, by all means not all of the parking need at this time. Mike and I have been monitoring the level of use in that parking lot since October-ish, something like that, and on a regular basis there are usually around ten cars per day in that lot. In the, since this resolution hit the council, that has bumped up, Mike and I both noticed that since the memo went out, that for some reason people are parking in that lot, so you probably hear comments from people that that free lot is sort of here to them, and I'm sure it is, but we are certainly willing to talk about... But we are, uh, certainly, uh, willing to talk about what accommodates the needs of people in the area. We're not looking to crowd out other development or other parkers. Uh, and we're certainly willing, as Patty mentioned, to, to pay twenty-five dollars a year for a spot, which is more than anybody else is paying right now. And right now, the city, you know, maintains the asphalt, does the striping, does the plowing, does the sanding, does the salting, uh, and the mowing of the grass strip without any corresponding revenue. And this would be, uh, a way for the city to recoup some of that and help, uh, our second, uh, phase of the Hathaway development to move forward.
Oh, um, could you tell us, uh, who would be using those thirty lots? There's nobody in those buildings now.
No, there, there, there are some people in both buildings now, but there will be a lot more people in, in those buildings when we're done, Fred. We expect to be putting in the Martins building especially more apartments and overnight parking would be especially here. I'd love to see a hotel go in there. I don't think that's a far-fetched idea. Frankly, the, the Hathaway looked pretty far-fetched when we proposed it, and, you know, we've done pretty well with that.
What's the timeframe on this call?
Um, I expect to start on the CMP building within, within 2015, and then the Martins building would commence as soon as the CMP building, uh, was, was complete. But it just seemed like an opportune time now just because of all the talk that's been, uh, that's, that's ongoing about the intersection and the desk green crossing. And it just seemed like a good, a good time to broach this rather than Mike and I just having, uh, having discussions.
Paul, is, is your financing regarding this new project, is it contingent on having secured a number of parking spaces?
The, we haven't gotten to the financing point of this, but I can tell you that parking is critical to getting financing. We're, we're seeing that, I'm living that right now with the Hathaway where we thought we were short on parking. We didn't think we were short on parking, but the bank thinks we're short on parking. I think I've solved that problem, but it's always an issue with respect to the financing.
Didn't, didn't the city lease you some parking spaces across from Water Street, across from your building when you first put in the Hathaway?
Yes, the, the Ballfield parking lot, uh, which is on the corner of Spring and Water, was supposed to be part of the purchase of the Hathaway, uh, property. And when we got down to closing that transaction, it turns out that the benefactor that gave that property to the city put in a stipulation that said the city could never sell that property. So in, in, uh, in order to accommodate us needing that for parking, the city ended into a long-term lease for that parking. So this would be very similar to that. It would just be for a portion of that parking.
Well, how many spaces are in that Spring Street?
Uh, there are a hundred and five spaces in that lot.
You utilize those?
We utilize those, yes.
And, and the lease is like a nominal amount, isn't it?
Yes, it's a very nominal amount, not even, not even the twenty-five dollars a year that we're proposing for this. Per space? It's not twenty-five dollars per year. I don't know. How does the, what?
Five dollars.
Is it one dollar per year? Yeah.
One dollar per year for the hundred and two margins, right?
Yes, yes. Again, uh, Mike told that it was supposed to come with a purchase, but at the last minute, we all got tripped up because we couldn't, we couldn't do it the way there was envisioned.
If, now, Colby was said that once the Levine building gets reoccupied, and I hope that, that happens, that the ten people a day are going to double or triple?
Yes, I think that, uh, that's a really excellent point. I've looked at the Levine building, uh, the, um, and that building's in tough shape, and there are huge sections of it that should probably come down, especially in the back, which opens up the potential to do parking on-site for that building when it gets redeveloped. And frankly, the most likely usage for that building will be residential. And the interesting thing about parking is the people that work in the offices during the day usually aren't there at night, and the people that have apartments there usually aren't there during the day. So you can lay, you can use the same parking space for two different constituencies.
So are you saying you want to rent the space and put your share with, with us?
If you want to park there, John, I'd be happy to let you park there.
And what about the crossing of the interstates? What's going to happen next?
Um, that, that is moving along. I mean, there are, there are a number of different studies, uh, proposed. I think we're going to end up with something that will be really, really, really nice and, and make the pedestrian access, uh, better and look more beautiful. I guess we're getting a little off topic, but the fact is that, that intersection will be something that we'll be proud of, I think, when we're done, uh, as opposed to now when it's kind of been ice war.
Now, Paul, I guess my concern is, is that this other business is interested in that lot. Obviously, they've, they've come forward and said some certain things about why should one business ought to have exclusive rights to that parking lot?
Sure.
And, um, that's, that's one of my concerns. The other thing is the lot that you have is a hundred and five spaces off Spring Street. Is that at full capacity now? Are you using every single lot that you're leasing out from that?
Yeah, as, as far as our, uh, financing is concerned, uh, every space in that lot is, is spoken for. That does not mean on every day it's built to capacity. Just like this Front Street lot is very rarely built to capacity. I would submit that there is excess capacity in the lot that we're talking about, and I think really the discussion is how much is reasonable all the way around. You know, originally, I asked Mike for fifty spaces and, and he said, "You know, based on my observation, that actually looks pretty doable." But then all of a sudden, we had a kind of a, you know, a last-minute rush.
Paul, if you, I know thirty spaces in that lot and you don't use them, would you then rent them out to people who need the spaces?
You know, uh, it's interesting. Karen asked me about, uh, because there is, as a part of the intersection, and Colby's study with downtown, talking about some kind of global comprehensive parking solution, quite possibly a parking deck in the, in the Ballfield parking lot. Certainly, if we can do something like that, I won't need the spaces across the street. So, you know, and I'm not going to be dramatic about it and say you can't have the spaces back because they, uh, why would I pay rent on them and, uh, down the road? And, and you know, the, the intent is, 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 is not to crowd out other people. It's just to, to, to generate some economic activity here. So, and, and my, uh, proposing this is not meant to be, um, unreasonable. It's to, to, to broach, how much of that lot do you think we could reasonably spin off so that I can say to my banks, you know, "I have forty spaces there that, that we can count," or "I have thirty spaces there." Right, because the bank doesn't care if there's actually cars physically in there, correct? They, they're, they're counting numbers. Right. Yes, Hannah?
I just was curious if you have these conversations with, um, Colby since we are in that partnership and working together to revitalize this area and if some of the, I feel like this might be putting...
The car to pull the horse.
Yeah, in a way, because there hasn't been, the plans haven't been necessarily drafted and complete yet, and, you know, this is a five-year period that you're looking forward to. And you know I'm very much excited about what you're doing down there. I think what you've done is magical with the Hathaway, really. And, um, so I have complete faith in what's about to happen next in phase two. I just was curious, have you had conversations with, you know, other people in, in the development committee? Is this the right step?
You know, I think, I think it is, Hannah, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going off topic a little bit, but we have plenty of parking in this town. It's just that people want to walk forty feet. You know, they've gotten used to walking forty feet instead of two hundred and forty feet. And we kind of, part of it is going to be an education that people might have to walk a half a block from their car to their place of deployment or their, or their apartment. And it's, uh, having said that, if we grow the town like we all hope that we will and make downtown into a real destination and a relaxed place that, that it used to be or can be again, we'll need more parking at that point. But at this point in time, we, we don't need more parking. And part of the Colby study is to address a global parking, uh, solution, adding more parking. Where, how that happens, I, I don't know. I'm, you know, I, I can only guess. I think I just sense, and, and have you been involved in this discussion at all?
Very minimally. Did receive some phone calls from this bank, but other than that...
And are these spaces really employees? Is that pretty much, there isn't a business that's using this for customer, is there?
No, they're, they're not the customers.
I don't know who owns it.
Their business is using it, but not the customer.
So it isn't, I mean, I used to park there when I worked at Hartgirls when it was located down there, so I'm very familiar with the slot, and it's typically empty, um, unless it's a, a, you know, an activity or something going on. I could park there and, or if, if, or the concourse. So it was, um, and it seems that there isn't a business around me that would be using it, so it really is employees who, who work down there.
Yeah, Camden has their own parking lot. I get the impression we have other people working on it.
You do. Well, Mike, how do we arrive at the twenty-five dollars a lot? How does that, how do you figure that, is that, you think that to recoup the costs or is, that's just seven hundred and fifty dollars a year?
Right. I didn't really have anything to go by because we don't have any lease arrangements now where we receive money. Paul made that as a proposal. He indicated to me that it was negotiable, but I don't have a benchmark to go by.
Is there, do you know what the cost would be for upkeep of that lot, Mark, or...?
It's very, yeah, it's very, very hard to say. Depending on how many times you plow it and whether, how long does it take, uh, how much sand you put down. It'd be very difficult to figure that out. Probably the easiest way would be to ask a private, would be to ask a contractor how much it would be to plow that parking lot, all right? That might be your best way of finding it.
Just out of curiosity, I know that the Kentucky Fried Chicken place has been, what was there, that's been purchased. Is that going to be torn down? Because that was originally the thought to get rid of that and actually put in some additional parking spaces there.
Right. I bought that property last fall, again, with an eye towards doing the second and third buildings that we would be needing. And so the opportunity came up to buy that building at an advantageous price, so I bought it. And, and yes, to answer your question, um, I'm not interested in being in the fried chicken business.
No, I think it was very easy to raise and lift the additional parking.
I mean, when I need it, it's, it's, it will be appropriate to, to tear it down and recoup a lot at that point. Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Al Ponson. We're leaving now here. I'm, uh, Fred, members of council. Our building is right across the street. Uh, just a little history, uh, we began discussions with the city to actually buy that lot because it was a parking lot in 2004. We were willing to pay up to twenty-five thousand dollars for it. We'd take care of all the maintenance, and we'd, we'd walk out the arrangements with the businesses in the area, and that was to protect it as a parking. But I got a look at the situation, uh, it was a little bit of humor. I'm used to paying twenty bucks a night where I've got the parking, real property in downtown Los. You don't want to know what parking space there goes. One was recently sold for half a million dollars. I mean, they're bidding against each other. But anyway, now we know that the price in Waterville is twenty-five bucks a year. And you know, I like, I like Common Street. Can I lease all of Common Street? Twenty-five bucks a year, we can afford it. And maybe we could have a couple in front of G H M. Bill wouldn't mind. He's busy enough. And Charlie wouldn't mind. I had a few over there in front of, uh, of the Silver Street Tavern, where can we rent those spaces too? Has the city set that, essentially set the, the price for leasing the parking spaces? And this parking space, uh, just in case folks haven't noticed, uh, used to have, um, probably fifteen or sixteen cars for a long time, but the, um, one with family practice moved in to the second floor of the Sterns Building, and they added another twenty cars to that site. So any given day, and they've only moved here in the first of last month, but I've been here above a month. That's the difference. That's what's happening in the community. I don't know why it wasn't noticed. But they take up the spaces. Oh yes, and there's some nice spaces right along the side of City Hall. Are those available for lease? We'd like to do that. Uh, but, uh, the second option is we've got sixty spaces down there. We'll take them all for thirty bucks a year. We'll plow it, we'll maintain it, and we'll take care of it. And we'll leave eleven parked there so you can do it for thirty bucks a year. That's a better deal. That's a lot better deal. So do we start the bidding now? But in all seriousness, we all want to make sure that we, we make things available for developers who want to do things. But it isn't by taking resources from, that are used by some businesses, setting them aside specifically for other businesses. We want to share these with people, and we want to do it, but, but I'm not sure that leasing it and setting them aside exclusively for one organization or one business versus another is the way to do it. I say that Mr. Boghossian has talked about a second floor, a second story for parking on the lot down near Old Ballfield. That's what we need to do. Let's build that. Let's, let's have the city, uh, pitch in and work with him, get the funds, get it done, and we'll pay the taxes to get that done, and then we all benefit. And we do it now without impacting the other members of the other businesses in the area. So my first two options are a little ridiculous, but I say we go back to the drawing board and get a system that'll work for Mr. Boghossian. And with that, I'll leave it up to you.
So have you, uh, so you obviously use some of the spaces?
Yes, we do.
How, how many?
Well, we have, uh, seven employees, uh, at the moment, and every, every one of them comes in a separate car because they're coming miles away. License parks there. Some people that work in this center park there.
You have tenants now, too?
And there are ten, there are tenants now upstairs of Pinnacle and Gateway. Pinnacle can, usually has maybe two or three on a daily basis, but can have as many as ten, uh, when they're having special training sessions. So there's at least, uh, at the ma, and of course, the Waterville, uh, family practice, I think, has at least twenty employees that, that park there. So we're looking at, uh, thirty to forty-five, um, people that need to use the parking. Then it did change. It's just, it wasn't that way, um, all the time, but it was growing.
Any, any, uh, alternative spots for you folks to park?
Well, we've only been here forty years.
Okay.
Well, it may even be forty, forty-one.
How about, uh, head of fall, any spots down there you could...
Uh, yes, but, but so can anyone else. Yeah. And yes, we did like the spot directly across the street, but that's no longer available with the central buildings. That's where we used to park it initially. We've been here that long. We've been in that building for thirty-six years. So, you know, we, we don't stop development, but we want to do it responsibly. And I'm not sure that this is a responsible way to do it. Thank you.
I'm Hugh Phelps, and my wife, Norma, and I are here to speak against this proposal as well. We purchased...
We purchased what's commonly known as the Sentinel Building, 31 Front Street, over a year and a half ago, with the intent to lease it back to its original owners, the ones who bought it, which is the Morning Sentinel, their company. For one floor, they were consolidating, signing on to the newspaper business. And leased the second floor to the Waterville Family Practice, which, the principals of which are Dr. Sue Childs and our daughter, Julie Phelps. As several people have mentioned, they moved in just about a month ago. And that, I think, clearly accounts for some of the bump up that has been described in terms of the use of the lot just in the last few weeks. There's a number of people that work in the Sentinel Building that use or potentially can use this lot. The newspaper...
How many spots does your building?
There's 36 spots in the, in 31 Front Street. The newspaper, as Scott Monroe made a study, has about 30 employees. The Waterville Family Practice has 16 employees. The Family Practice generates about 100 patients per day coming in to visit the office. And there's a surprising number just from our casual observations visiting, of walk-in visitors to the paper.
Isn't it true, sir, that you actually do have contractual right to some spots on the, on the Head of Falls? Doesn't the Sentinel Building have contractual rights?
Oh, well, it's, I think it's somewhat more complicated. I think it says something to the effect that if the city ever wants to sell that piece of the property, then we have the right to buy, I think it's 20 spaces, and then, without any speculations about the cost or anything else. But the bulk of the uses on this Front Street lot...
You guys are actually, you've got more than enough people in your building to use up all your spaces?
Yes. Yeah, basically, there's 36 spaces in the lot. And that's when it's fully plowed, there's no snow, you know. And there's over 40 employees, over 100 visitors every day. And we knew when we purchased the building that parking was going to be a real issue because obviously that, those numbers don't fit. And we were reassured to know that the town had this parking lot available, that it was available to us and everybody else in the neighborhood for parking. And it was on that basis that we made the purchase. If this proposal were accepted, obviously, access to that lot would be somewhat limited. And it's been mentioned, we know that the city does not have these spaces in the lots. This would be a precedent that I hope you accept by proceeding with this.
I'm Scott Monroe, president. I guess what gets me now is knowing that, hearing that he bought the old Kentucky Fried Chicken. These parking spaces, he's got the land he actually owns. He can tear it down, use what he can for parking now. But he says later on that he'll use it later when he's got the perfect parking now. And even that, this would be a bad idea. And, you know, like I said, a lot of businesses use it. And eventually, Main Street is going to be revitalized. People are going to want to place a park. Where are they going to park? If he owns it, so are we going to tell people, come to Main Street and say, oh, this lot's full, this lot's owned by this person, you can't park here? What are they going to do? They're going to turn around and say, well, if you don't want me here, I'm going to leave. I really think this is a bad idea, especially now knowing that he's got a lot that he could probably put 30, 40 cars, at least 20 cars in that little space. It's just a very bad idea.
Hi, I'm Scott Monroe, the managing editor of the Morning Sentinel. So the Morning Sentinel was signing today, media, and as Hugh was alluding to, we did have a change recently with Waterville Family Practice moving into the building. The Morning Sentinel now resides on the first floor of that building. We do retain 10 spots in the lot at the Morning Sentinel. And we reserve those for just a handful of employees that need to leave the building in the event of a fire or, you know, get out of the building quickly. But the majority of our employees do now use the lower Front Street lot. So this morning, for example, at 9:30, there were 27 cars parked in the lot. I would say roughly, the Morning Sentinel uses between 10 and 15 of those spaces, depending on who's around. Many of those are advertising, a few are in news with our department. I have seen closer to 40 cars in the lot on certain days. But again, that kind of depends on how many folks we have there and again, how much traffic Waterville Family Practice is experiencing. So, you know, we're concerned about this creating some parking problems, not just for us, but for other surrounding businesses, that there's the potential hierarchies against each other buying for some of the spaces. You know, I know certainly there's been a lot of talk about parking in the downtown. Although there may be a lot of opportunity, I think there's a feeling that there is a squeeze for parking in this particular section of downtown and that becomes really heightened sometimes when you have events going on, whether it be the farmer's market, Commerhaus showings. There can immediately be a lot of traffic and need for public spaces like that. So I would just ask, does the city consider this and ask, ask the question, is it really right to do kind of a Band-Aid solution right now or to look at this in more kind of long-term, innovative way? The halfway center, and as Paul was talking about, the former CMP building. That whole complex is in a specially traded downtown industrial zone that the city created for mixed use, including residential and commercial. And part of that downtown industrial zone includes some less stringent requirements for parking. One idea I would propose is that if the goal for the city is to encourage development at the halfway complex, why not look at the city's only ordinance and consider perhaps amending the requirements for that special zone that encompasses halfway. Perhaps adjusting the parking needs that way. According to the city planning records, the main halfway lot has 135 spaces. The city lot on Water Street that the halfway is leasing, that includes 103 spaces, according to city assessing records. At 2 o'clock today, I counted 28 cars in that lot where there are 103 spaces. And by 5:30 in the evening, there were four cars there. So I kind of wonder about that Water Street lot and whether that's being fully utilized. And then there's also the so-called CMP lot south of the main halfway lot. And as Paul and others talked about, the potential for the KFC building and some parking there. All told, it seems like there are perhaps somewhere between 300 and 400 existing parking spaces available for the halfway complex. It's not clear to me how many additional spaces may be needed under the second phase of this project. So it might be good to take a step back on that, as others have talked about, and look at what is that total number that's needed and how can we address parking in a more holistic way. I would ask that the council at the very least postpone action on the resolution and instead take some more time to understand the scope of the parking needs and come up with what might be perhaps a more practical and potentially safer way of addressing the parking needs, particularly given the crossing of the intersection there and that there's not been any pedestrian improvements.
Hi, my name is Karen Peck. I live in 1-6, Apex, for a number of years in this town. And while I'm not quite as old as Al, I do remember some history. And that is the history that started back in about 2008 when Paul actually brought to this town some new enthusiasm when our, sort of the heart of the town, which was the halfway mill, had reached about the bottom of its level of use and had closed. And it really, the town had an amazingly bad attitude about itself. It felt bad. We were losing the mill. We lost the mill across the town. There was talk about leaving, hospital leaving. And in the beginning of the recession in 2008, Al actually bought that building and started to make something that none of us actually really believed could happen, which was apartments that are high-end apartments. And they're full apartments and there are waiting lists for those apartments. And I understand the issue about parking where you work and where you want to be because sometimes if I don't get a parking spot in front of a store, I don't go because I'm just lazy sometimes. But, and I think that lots of us are. I also think that there are issues around the town that the Colby Group, the Charette, have been addressing around universally creating a parking plan that will address not just the development that's going on already and is proposed at halfway, but all of Main Street, which we hope it becomes, will become more residential. And I agree that putting a universal plan in place is a good one. But if the bank is the one who's determining how many parking spaces we have, and believe me, I have lots of problems with banks. And if, but if this bank is saying, we need to have this many spaces and we as a community have the option of providing that many spaces on a temporary basis? Because I believe I heard Paul say that he is willing to negotiate this when there's a bigger issue. If this is something that is going to move the next phase of development forward? I would hope that we would work on something that will be an interim plan as well as something that we'll be able to plan in a more thoughtful way in the next couple of years with the Colby development. I mean, we've already said in the Colby meetings, we really do, excuse me, need to deal with the parking issue that's on the table. It's one of the things that's going to be developed. But right now, in this particular instance, we have an opportunity to develop another building that's already been, you know, prepped and ready to go. So I guess I would hope that as an interim step on the way to Nirvana, parking Nirvana, that we take this opportunity to support the development that's been here and continuing and working to move this town forward. And I do appreciate the fact that all of the businesses have been able to use that space. And at the same time, there's also a space at the Head of Falls, which is often at the, and as well as the same one as the other businesses.
Miss that?
Yes. Missed your own conference. Miss your own conference.
As a, as a, as a, uh, insular regret, isn't it truly, you have an employment connection with the Point Center?
I do. Oh, now I don't get paid.
Oh?
So have you been needing my calls?
I have.
Yeah, so yeah, I would be talking against my employer, but, uh...
What'd you?
Yeah. I'm so desperate for people to listen to my opinions, I'm giving them away.
Thank you.
I, uh, I think it's Nick Champagne, uh, at the Clutch Street in Waterville. I also am employed by Haiti Hudson, years, um, for, uh, Commerce Street. And, um, I just, you know, uh, I had some concern about this when I, when I read about it and it was in the paper, uh, hearing about it through, uh, through discussions. Obviously, the main concern I have, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, obviously, is the, is the development downtown. And the timing of this, I just feel like it's, it's not right. You know, we have, um, some wonderful things coming in downtown, especially with, with Colby, potentially coming in with some, uh, investors for residential area down there. You know, and beyond that, um, you know, I keep hearing, you know, "Why don't we, uh, you know, park at the Head of Falls?" Well, Head of Falls has plenty of spots, why, uh, why couldn't we offer them some spots down there? If it's only a few extra hundred feet, perhaps they could, uh, all park down there. We could leave some, some spots down there and just keep the, uh, the parking lot open. But anyway, I just wanted to voice my concern about this and in opposition of this proposal, I just think the court and the council should consider that.
Did I do anything, sir?
Uh, I was gonna say, nobody else has any comments? I'd like to call for vote.
I second that.
To be honest with you, I, I don't know how we vote on this, very well. Because I do give a lot of precedents that could be set here. Um, I would say table this.
Should we, is it too late?
I second it.
Cause he said out in the break.
I second it.
They moved in seconded.
You call, you call for a vote?
I have a question. I don't know if, can we still talk?
No.
Can we talk about the action, correct? Okay. Um, I mean, this is for a five-year period, which I think is probably what makes people nervous if we're talking about a kind of a temporary solution until we can get these, whether it's parking structure or some type of, uh, parking, um, program. I'm wondering if we could make it feel more temporary rather than a five-year. But I don't know if the bank needs to know that it's, it's yours for five years, these spaces. I, I'm curious if anybody in terms of their that, or if all of you would know. Do you need to have it five, for five years?
Yeah, actually, the bank asked us to get ninety-nine years. So maybe I'd split the difference between the five. You know, um, there were, there have been comments about, uh, changing the zoning. I wish that would help because that would be very easy. These are financial institutions that are very rigorous, uh, requiring X number of parking spaces per, uh, leasable square foot. And, uh, I have lived this almost non-stop, uh, since last November, when our current financing for the Hathaway, um, matured. And it has been parking that has prohibited us from being able to refinance that asset. So I know how acutely important parking is, uh, in terms of moving any development forward. It has prohibited us from refinancing Hathaway, which is a very sad event for me, uh, because we gotta get the bank out so that we can really get on with the business of this, of this development.
So the reason you haven't done the final steps at Kentucky Fried Chicken is because of money aspect?
The reason that we haven't done Kentucky Fried Chicken is that it's not enough.
Not enough parking?
Not enough parking.
That's already being counted, isn't that correct? So it's not like that for thirty spots here, it's collectively.
And, uh, it's, it's, it's problematic, uh, because it's, it's not zoning that is imposing these regulations. It's, it's, uh, the banking world and their perception of what is, what is merchant told and what is not. And, uh, you know, I, I thought that this was a reasonable proposal to lease a portion of that lot. Some of the comments, um, handedly, I think, are a little disingenuous, you know, leasing on space at, at Head of Falls is ludicrous, when that is a step away from some of these businesses and it's a quarter mile away from us. So, uh, we're, we're proposing to pay for something that nobody is paying for now. And it's, that was, that was...
So by the numbers, I mean, I think the most we heard were in that spot. I think it was kind of forty-some odd people. And you're, and it is fifty. Is that correct? And you're looking for...
Yes, I think there are fifty spaces in the lot, right?
Sixty.
Sixty spaces.
Fifty spaces in the lot.
Didn't you folks say that they've been up with to thirty recently? Which is what, and Hudson's saying?
I've been there four separate times to count in the mornings. It's been twenty, uh, three times, and then at no time it was thirty-one. Fourth time.
Paul, if, if twenty spaces for a Kentucky Fried Chicken doesn't help you, how would thirty spaces help you? That's not a lot of amount.
No, it, it, it is, we are tipping away at this. And I'm thinking about the next phase of development. If, if the banking world is joking on the inadequacy of our current parking, what are they gonna say about the buildings that have very little parking? That's really where this is coming from.
So, Paul, your next phases, you, I don't know if you've ever been able to, um, like, you had said possibly hotel. Is there a way that you could... It's hard, because I know you have some really exciting ideas and things of bringing stuff into Waterville. Are you able to discuss some of those plans that might let people know why this parking would be so valuable for Waterville and bringing this?
Sure, I'd, I'd be happy to. I, I mean, I don't know if that's the best use of the time here.
Well, I just thought real quickly, because right now, it's two empty buildings and...
Yeah, right now, in the first building, there, there are north of five hundred people living and working. And hence the need for parking. And as we develop, that's, that's not even, that's a little more than half of the skirt footage on site. So if you, if you consider that we have another four hundred people living and working in the next phase, that's a lot of parking. That's a lot of parking.
You're not prohibited, under the, at least with the city, the spot you are now, at least, you're not prohibited from building a parking garage, are you?
No, we're, we're not. It's, it's really the economics of whether that makes sense. If you put up these spaces leased to you, are you gonna have a parking sticker or something so that people that park there? I mean, if I went down there during the day and parked my vehicle there, which you probably don't know what it is, and left it there for the day, am I gonna come back, would I go to offer? We wouldn't know in all likelihood. As a, as a practical matter, it, it, it's really just to show on paper that we have thirty spaces. It's not really...
I'm just really torn between this, because it's, I don't like to put this business against business and to say, "Well, I mean, you've done a great job with the Hathaway building, so I'm very grateful to you, but also very grateful to the businesses that have stayed there." And to have it, the businesses that have invested in the city. So I just wish we had a meeting before this, so the council could maybe turn a little bit more, make sure that people are coming here and saying, you know, "We're gonna lease this for twenty-five dollars." And then, you know, the businesses are saying, "Well, why can't we do the same?" It's really, uh, it's a bagmy, or it's, uh, hard. It, I'm really gonna have to decide here too.
Fred, you sticking with your motion to vote? All those in favor?
So we're voting on the resolution?
We are. All those in favor? On to Resolution five-three-two-zero-one-five.
Our resolution provides for appropriation from South End Neighborhood Inclusion Fund. Here resolved by the City Council and City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows. That an amount up to five thousand dollars remain available to the South End Neighborhood Fund, where expenses associated with inclusion at a new free park. It is understood that such funds will not be spent until not be found as our example.
We threw it out.
Okay. Discussion.
Um, I just wanna say that I'm for this. That's something we have to, like, along the same, as Jackie said, as we are working on, we have some really great ideas to attract. Jackie, plug in a little bit more about it.
Hi, Jackie Dupont again. And heard her in crime on this project, uh, Main Street Park project.
Dave DuTell, also a Waterville resident?
Um, yes, we, um, we had a public forum meeting recently, um, to really collect ideas and feedback from residents and other stakeholders in Waterville, on residents of the South End, about what we want to see in this park that would make it multi-use, um, offer diverse opportunities for fitness and recreation, cultural, social activities. And we had this really robust list of, um, ideas and, um, ways to use this park holistically, with the skate park being the centerpiece of it. Um, and then prioritize those, those wants and wish lists. And so then the South, and actually, fortunately, we had a form of South End Neighborhood Association members at that public meeting, and we decided right off that we were gonna support this project. It's definitely gonna be a multi-phase project, and we're really excited about it. And I know that our members and other Southern supporters and other stakeholders are here and also very excited about this project. And, um, so SENA decided, we asked ourselves, can we earmark some of the funds from the South End Capital Improvement Fund for this project? And everyone was in agreement that this fits perfectly too with what the fund is designated for. The use of the fund specifically talks about creation of trails and pathways and open spaces, maintaining, you know, improving parks. Um, and so it just makes sense that if we talk about changing the narrative of the South End, revitalizing the neighborhood, revitalizing this park, and really, um, amping up the skate park and making it one, and making it the best skate park in Maine, um, then this makes sense that we would wanna be a part of it. And we wanted to say as a neighborhood that we support this, um, it's in our neighborhood and it's gonna be fantastic.
Jackie, uh, I support your idea a lot, and I think it's a great idea. The reservation I have is how are we gonna place it to make sure vandalism doesn't destroy what we're doing?
Yeah, we currently act, we are working on a security plan, if you will, security. We're coordinating with Chief Massey. We've already had increased police presence so far, you know, more police derived lives. Uh, we're also working on getting cameras set up down there, map scan. And I've been talking about getting the cameras set up. There's currently a light pole there now, so, you know, during the nighttime, when a lot of the illicit activity happens, uh, we can essentially literally shed light on the bad stuff. So, you know, it really bring out, um, you know, what park is, you know, daytime and nighttime.
Can we organize some kind of citizen law?
Absolutely. In fact, that's on the next agenda for our next, our SENA meeting next month, is the reinvigorating of that neighborhood crime watch that was a part of the beginning of SENA. And you know, I mean, and I think we also have to recognize that, um, with, when a park gets more use, then folks looking to misuse it won't go there.
It's like a Main Street park, you know, that's always, okay, I mean, that could be vandalism there, but they're, you know, it's...
But because it's constantly being used.
Yeah, I was gonna point that out, you have the basketball courts that are not, that are always the park, which is not the end life. If more people go down there, you're gonna find the same thing.
Exactly. Increased foot traffic is definitely the main thing, you know. You, you essentially have an open, uh, grassland with a couple really small features, and you know, it just doesn't draw in a lot of people. And therefore, you know, people go there to hang out, especially youth. But you bring more, uh, more livelihood to that area, you improve it, and you get the residents to take ownership of that, and they will do just that, you know, increase foot traffic, which is a lot of...
And the morale of the South End.
The morale, and let's look ahead. We are revitalizing, and our goal is to open up the South End to the rest of Waterville, um, with, with Paul's work, with downtown. So we want, um, families to move into that area, revitalize the area, and how cool would that be to have a fabulous park there? You've done a great job with skate park, um, and so I know the parks in my committee, um, you know, very excited about the work that's being done down there.
Thank you very much, it means a lot coming to this park. And just wanted to please kind of touch on the, the parking issue, um, in the South End. With the, you know, snowing, uh, sorry, sledding during the winter time, this is a huge thing, especially for the children. And a lot of cars park right on top of Sherwood Hill right next to the sidewalk, and that could create a lot of problems. So part of this project includes to add some, a, a very small parking lot, essentially just like an open dirt parking lot, where cars can come in and drop kids off and come back and drive them later, or, you know, actually park there so they can use the park that way, there's more place for cars to park safely.
And also creates more visibility too of the parking. A lot of people don't get to know that this gem exists in that valley. It's the best sledding challenge ever. It really is. So...
If you wanna throw it...
Do you want to get your heart going?
Yeah.
Mike, do we have to, the City Council has to approve this fund, this spent expenditure because of the amount?
Right. The policy that was sent out with your agenda says that the council has to approve expenditures from the fund. And if you approve this tonight, you know, as it says, it provides up to five thousand, but before any of the money's released, we certainly wanna come back to you and let you know exactly what it's for. Providing the matching funds are there, we can come back and say, "Okay, they've raised some money, and here's what's gonna happen."
And, uh, just a quick note, um, we did receive a five thousand dollar grant from the Walmart Foundation, uh, towards the project already, so, you know, we're listening, already do have a matching fund, um, set aside, but, yeah.
I'm just kidding about this. I see a small presentation the council could actually see, or revisioning.
Yeah, absolutely. We, I do have a presentation already set up.
Yes.
So if, uh, if any available time, it'd be, uh, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If there's no discussion, I would call for a vote. All those in favor?
What's your motion?
Yes, I was.
All those in favor? Next is, uh, thank you, Paul. Resolution five-four-two-zero-one-five.
A resolution providing for reference to the planning board by the City Council, KMD. Here resolved by the City Council and City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows. That in accordance with Article seven of the zoning ordinance, referring to the planning boards of public hearing and recommendation, a request to create a new contract known district. Rezoning is necessary to allow construction of a car wash at one forty-five KMD in Waterville. That property, assessor map thirty-seven, thirty-seven parcel two-thirty-eight, is owned by Dr. Gerald Hurdle. It is found on the property map of the City of Waterville dated April one, nineteen ninety-two, as updated on April one, two thousand and fifteen.
Move to it now.
It was one forty-five KMD.
It's, we, I'll let Ann introduce this.
Would you like to speak?
Ranger.
Yep.
Oh, okay. So, uh, Dr. Hurdle, is he here, or is that, and just...
And God love you, I know I told Drew that we probably get you about an hour ago, so...
I didn't, I didn't foresee that. Just a little tennis, that's okay.
Thank you.
I just brought a little, uh, sketch of what it's supposed to look like.
I just, you know...
Is that something I can... The proper gentleman, right?
This is the, um, the...
So, good afternoon, I'm Gerald Hurdle. I, uh, moved to Waterville, Oakland area, about four years ago. Have a medical practice right next door. It's the old Waterville family practice that, uh, just renovated over here to this little building. And now I have a new venture, um, to bring car wash to the area that needs it. I am, uh, I, I like the fact that the Weeks Building has been there, it's an icon of the city. But as you drive past there right now, it's not an icon. But I wanna bring a automatic car wash and dog wash to that area, um, because I, I feel that the traffic needs, when there is car wash, uh, season, that the KMD and right now, that backup traffic and the lack of, uh, having a automatic car wash in this area is needed. Currently, right now, though, the car washes are manned by an individual that needs a crew. And they work from set hours to set hours. This is automatic, you drive when you want to. We have a schematic of what it looks like. This is something that looks like we're gonna make it look like a house, because it is commercial and residential, uh, property. Uh, it will look just like a house that's sitting there, um, to blend into the atmosphere. Because it's automatic, there are no workers, there's no parker, there's nobody parking there. It's gonna have two bays and a dog wash that's automatic, so you can come in at your convenience, wash your dog, wash your car. The reason why the touchless is sensitive to me is because a lot of people, um, have brand-new cars. And as you look at your paint job after you go through a car wash with a brush, and you just happen to be the unlucky person that goes behind that four-by-four, uh, mud, muddy for you, there's no way that the dirt and grime off those brushes have just, uh, went away, figure if you're able to come through. So now, when it comes to summertime, do a look at your car and see these squirrel marks all through it. Once you've taken that to the, uh, insurance company a couple of times, you'll see that that's not worth it. So a touchless car wash holds two purposes. A, it can utilize at your convenience, doesn't have to have, uh, proper hours. B, it doesn't give your car, especially if you're spending over thirty thousand dollars for an average in the car, um, it doesn't give that appearance to the outer body that has scratches and marks on it. And C, it doesn't, um, require you to look for a touchless car wash in Augusta, or somewhere that's twenty or thirty miles away. And, um, the, I think it would be a, an added resource to the, um, community, because we've lost two car washes, um, prior to the wanting to start this one. And right now, you have, um, one down the street, and then there's one that's actually for lease or closing, which is across from the Hannaford on Main Street, uh, that I used to frequent, um, but now it's not operable. So I'm proposing rezoning. Uh, this was a Weeks Auto Body Shop in the past, and, um, this space has been utilized in the capacity of a auto body shop in the past, and me wanting to convert it to a car wash seems reasonable. Another thing is the water issue with car washes, well, as an automatic car wash, these doors open and close, and the cars are pretty much fully dry before the door even opens. So the water that would potentially be on KMD would be at very minimal.
This is just a reference to the planning board, right, Dan? You folks would be the ones, you know, a lot of the talking about what's going on.
Right, and the site plan review as well.
I will say, we have one of these at Skon Egan where I work, and it's pretty psych to drive up, sit in the car, and it's, like the doctor said, uh, you come out, your car's dry, and it is extremely minimal, any kind of water. It's, it's basically what rolls off your tires.
I used to frequent the express loop one down the, the one that's closed. And I couldn't go at eleven o'clock at night, wash my vehicle, and no one bothered me, you know? The other one.
Tracker does back up to Centennial.
You're all the way up, definitely don't.
KMD, I'm busy, and the other one.
And, and Ann, neighbors will be able to go to the planning board and speak to the folk, correct? Including the hours of operations.
Exactly.
Because that might be something we're worried about.
It's just...
Explain just a little bit of the car wash. They, that Cincinnati, where you're down again?
No, actually, it's a little tub that's automated with a credit card. Everything will be in credit card, there's no money transactions in any of these, uh, so nobody would be in the process of trying to get robbed or anything of that nature. It's all credit card. And the, the dog wash is a, is a room that... Dog wash is a room that's open on the front of KMD with adequate lighting, obviously. And basically, you just walk in, the dog has a little ramp, has its tub, stick in your credit card, it goes through all the changes as a regular car wash does, the soap, the foam, the deep flea, and the whole nine yards, and then we leave a little bandana or some dog bones and things that you can pick up as.
And the dog will come out dry after a while.
Yeah, this is dryer, this is dryer. And as it convenes, your dog will allow you, low pressure or high pressure. Yeah, don't take any cats. Yeah, there's a lower speed that you can use if you want to do that.
Great, can we take a vote?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Next. Resolution 552015.
A resolution providing for reference to the planning board by the city council, 133 Water Street. It is resolved by the city council and the city board while acting as municipal officers as follows. That in accordance with Article 7 of the zoning ordinance, referring to the planning board for public hearing and recommendation, a request to rezonate 133 Water Street from commercial B to residential C. Rezoning is necessary to decrease the required building setbacks and allow for the construction of a residential garage. 133 Water Street, assessor map 39 parcel 111, is owned by Whitney Blakely and under contract to Michael Blaistow. It is found on the property map of the city of Waterville dated April 1, 1992, as updated on April 1, 2015.
Move to it up.
My name? Hi folks, I'm Mike Blaistow. I'm a patient, I drive school bus for Waterville. Friday will be closing when I purchase this from my. We grew up together, I know what I'm buying, I'm not buying a piece of junk. I'm moving back from Sydney into Waterville, put some more tax on your, your car for, hopefully. I'm asking for this because I own some antique vehicles, and I own three. And I need a place to put them when I come back to town. That's my main reason for asking for this. I've listened to things on the South End, I have a lot of kids that ride my bus, that is my bus route, Water Street. I know everybody, I know their parents. I grew up there as a kid. And I'm just looking forward that I can come back to town, have a place to put my vehicles, have a garage. But the setbacks, the way it is, I can make a garage just thick. And if I'm looking to build a 20-wide, 24-deep, or 24-by-24, whichever would let me, let me do. And I appreciate it, your folks have helped me.
Do you wash cats at all?
I have a 1976 MGV, in condition. I have a 1982 Honda, oh, $25,000 of a May, I own one, in condition. I have a 1986 Geo Metro, in condition. I get 45 to 50 miles of gallon of that, and that's why I bought it. And another reason I'm moving back to town is because it cost me and my girlfriend between $300 and $400 a month to travel back and forth to town all the way. And I think that I can use some of that to try to soften this one.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Call for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? 562015.
An order provided for approval of four contracts.
Move three by two only.
All those in favor?
An order provided for approval of four contracts.
Move to it up.
All those in favor? Second.
We're running late, the manager's report is very quick. Next Tuesday night, budget meeting, it's our last scheduled one for reviewing department budgets, 28, 6 p.m. Next item, Bill Lee reminded me today that we have a new charter, takes effect July 1, and he suggested a workshop with the council, which I think is a very good idea. Some things are gonna change, including how your meetings are conducted, as far as voting on orders and resolutions. So Bill said, does the council want to meet in May? Or June? May is gonna be a pretty heavy budget time, I suggested June, he preferred May, he said, well, why don't you ask the council?
Well, we only need, what, 15 minutes?
Oh, I think it would take longer to go over all the changes. Oh, yeah.
June sounds good to me.
I say June, what, Bill going on vacation or something?
No, he just is worried that we're gonna wait too close to July 1, but I don't see that.
I haven't even learned these rules, come on.
June, June it is. All right, last time, I know we have a couple of guests here tonight, and I'm gonna ask Councilman Mayhew to introduce us.
Jason Moltke? Yeah, I invited David Moltke, he's a main part of transportation for freight services to come forth and bring some information. As you know, he just passed a passenger rail resolution, and this just happened to be some good timing for that.
Thank you, and good evening, and anticipated having Patricia Quinn from the Northern Noodles Passenger Rail Party would be tonight, but she had a family emergency that came up, so maybe it stuck with me, I'm a much better speaker anyway. I know you've had a long evening already, it's exciting to see at least you're talking about development and not plugging us with businesses and things like that up here, so. Despite some of the controversy, it's exciting to see you're undergoing some new growth up here. And one of the questions is asked me, just talk about some of the challenges as well as some of the opportunities that come with passing the rail, and, you know, what, how that might play out in the town. And I think, you know, the first point I want to make is, you know, it's more what the city, what the city wants, what it envisions. You know, folks ask me, you know, whether it's passenger rail or freight rail, or, you know, estimates on rebuilding, you know, what's it gonna cost, how much a mile? Kind of depends on what you want. I mean, how fast do you want to go, how smooth do you ride, do you want it to be? You know, do you want to connect with the Down Easter in Brunswick? How many trips a day? How long, you know, a period do you want people to have on the ground when they get here? What is the destination? You know, for the Down Easter service, even as far out as Brunswick, it's kind of been Boston. But it's further you get out, kind of like circles, the further you get out, the harder it is for that destination to be the draw. You know, Boston was an hour away, we don't go there a lot. Where it's five hours, four, five hours away, it's a little bit more of a challenge. So similarly with, with the train, if you're gonna spend 10 hours, five hours each way, you know, to get there and back, to go to a ballgame, you know, people are gonna, are gonna think twice about that. So you need to think about, what is the draw? You know, there is a lot of business development opportunities that we've seen, you know, with the Down Easter, with its condominiums being built, in places like Saco, or hotels in Brunswick, or things like that. But those are based on people coming and ridership and, you know, bringing those into town. So you need to be sure, you know, you have those types of things. Your nearest connection here is Brunswick. You're about, you know, 52 miles, more or less, depending on where you land to get here. You know, when you start talking about rehab costs and things like that, again, it kind of varies on what you want to see, speeds, the comfort. It's very likely a service up here would be more of a standalone service that connects with the Down Easter, another extension of the Down Easter is less likely. Intract as an operator while they do a good job is an expensive operator. Very full train setup here to a low-density area like this would be a bit of a challenge. Though more than likely, again, these are kind of my opinions, not necessarily the department's. One advantage you do have here is the Lower Road, which connects to Brunswick, what we call the Lower Road here in rail terms. It has had very light freight traffic, traffic moving from here down to East Augusta and nothing from Augusta to Brunswick at this time. So that's an advantage. Certainly, again, you look at, probably new equipment, your own crewing again, your crews start to run out of time. If you start to get into that, to the Down Easter system without changing crews or equipment, those crews are just like truck drivers, they run out of time. So trying to put somebody on a train here, run to Boston and get back, without that crew timing out, is probably very unlikely. So, so those types of things. Again, if the city, you know, does have a vision for this, I'd recommend you work closely with Augusta. Similarly, has a vision that had just come forward. I think their vision is to be a terminus, maybe to the interstate with a lot of parking. If the train's gonna continue onto Waterville, then that maybe changes what you envision there. You know, because people coming from the north are more likely to stop and get on a train here, rather than driving to Augusta to get on a train. Maybe not, I don't know that. But again, when you, when you think about citing, you gotta think about things like transit. You do have a good base here with some of the colleges in outstate, colleges are high users of passenger rail. We've seen it certainly in both in Brunswick. But you gotta find a way to get them there, whether it's transit or other types of connections. Again, parking, you know, with the trains, comes things like parking, more traffic. You're gonna bring more people to town, that'll also bring more people to town. So, so it's not always just outside to think about, improve when you're citing a location where you might put this. And again, I would work closely with Augusta to try to come up with a regional vision. Because there's a lot of, if anybody's been paying any attention to this, I think we've got six proposals on the table at DOT right now, with really no funding in sight for any of them. That's another piece of it that's tough these days. There really hasn't been substantial passenger rail funding at federal level since the time of stimulus back six years ago, when there was a substantial plot, but since then, there really hasn't been much to kind of continue that vision. So then it kind of falls to the state and state funding and/or local, but it's not cheap. You know, if you look at your typical rehab for the construction, and again, I'm not making any assumptions about the, the infrastructure that's out there, but in general terms, you're probably looking at a million dollars a mile to rebuild it. And that's, you know, that's, that's the easy part, I like to say sometimes. Because construction money, you can, you know, you can find it, you get a good plan, eventually something breaks loose at the federal level and you're able to get that money. But the bigger thing is, how do you continue to operate? Because it's just like any other, whether it's a road, or an airport, or, you know, buses or anything, these all operate, these are public services, they operate on the subsidy, or an investment, you can help that way. So we'll take some sort of annual investment by some party, whether it be the state, the towns, or the federal government to support this. A good return, Down Easter right now returns above 50% of its cost on fare bills, and that's very good. An agency like the MBTA, Boston returns above 30%, that's more typical. So as projects move forward, another thing to look at is, you know, everybody's kind of clamoring for expansion, but at the same time, this past winter's kind of shown us that, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure here in the Northeast that, you know, perhaps has been neglected too long to make sure we shore up the trunk line that we have to get ourselves into Boston. Certainly, we saw with the MBTA this winter, and there's a recent, interesting reading, a recent report from a special task force that was set up down there, Phil, and some of their deferred maintenance system. There's gonna be some real challenges down there moving forward. And so if the goal is to get to Boston, you get to deal with that infrastructure too, and that's always a struggle. To convince main legislature to spend money in Massachusetts in support of a train coming from Maine. Certainly, that, again, when we go, all the challenges we have there in Maine, that's the struggle. So again, I would look hard at, what do you envision for a service? Where do you think your people are going? Are you trying to bring people here? And while there is some that, you have to think about, when you bring them here and they get off, what are you gonna offer them? And that plays into what you have for, you know, station, location, facilities, and things of that nature. Have something to offer, because you've got to sell them something and convince them not to get off the freeway on Brunswick or something like that before they get here. They may come here as well, they may do, you know, stop in several places. But you have to think about what you can bring unique to some type of service that can convince people to come forward from here if you're bringing in that type of in-city service, if it's more commuter-type service moving from here to Fortland or here to Augusta. And then something different, that's more trips, generally more costly. But, but again, different type of service. So the vision is, what type of service do you want, numbers of trips? Working with some regional partners to get this moved up on priority list. And think about this long-term, because it'll take time, and even if money was falling from the sky, it would take time. There's a lot of negotiations go on with, you know, crate operators and, you know, acquiring all those things like parking and things of that nature to put a, put a piece together. The building blocks of something like this, again, is probably ideally, and again, in my mind, would be forming some type of consensus on a regional proposal, bringing that to the state, to the Passenger Rail Advisory Council, or to the DOT, to look at, you know, again, with some local support and some local dollars, funding some type of study to see, you know, to see if it's viable. Quite frankly, to get out into the hinterlands here, it's, the population, if you use your standard planning for passenger rail, your population doesn't dictate that you'll have the success that you might, you might have in other places. And that's the problem with the federal money now, it's a competition, these federal dollars. And when you're competing for, say, somebody like Boston, Massachusetts, who's gonna need a big shot man, they're talking $50 billion over the next 10 years, just to keep their service viable. You know, you're talking about millions of people versus a new proposal to come to Waterville. So that's some of the things that you need to think about. So if you're looking at funding some sort of study, is it viable? What type of service, trips, equipment, how you pay for it, all those kind of things, and then you move towards it. If you could prove that point, trying to chase down some funding to fund the construction and the operations, so. Without any other questions going on, I'll stop and try to answer any questions, and more than happy to come back if folks want to talk about this further, so.
I understand there's a state study already underway for rail service.
There is, there is a new bill in, and it is coming up on the 23rd for debate, and put in by Michelle Dunkey.
Oh, that's for, to go to Bangalore, yeah. And, and you could, again, with coordination, potentially piggyback on it, but that's, I mean, that's, you know, that's a strategy in your pocket, because if you kind of hit your wagon to that horse, you're talking about a much bigger, Bangalore's a long ways from there. So you're talking about, you know, instead of maybe a $50 million project, you might be talking about $150 million. Now, while they bring benefit, they also bring a bigger price tag, so. Doesn't make sense to coordinate with Bangalore. And there's a couple of different ways to get there. Again, we're talking about the Lower Road, which is scheduled up to Augusta and then Pan Am up to here. Probably makes the most sense if you're gonna connect to the Down Easter in Brunswick. If you're looking at something different, and say you want to get to Lewis and Auburn, or something, then you've got another, the inland route, which is now the Pan Am mainline, which comes with some advantages, you know, maybe it's a little better condition, things like that, but also comes with, you know, a lot more freight traffic and some challenges there, so. I think that bill will be, will be a challenge to get passed. I mean, there was a bill earlier to ship to Lewis and Auburn, look at that, again, and I think, I think it passed the House, maybe I heard today, but again, there is, I think they threw some money in the pot to get it, to get it done. And these studies are significant, I mean, something like this, very new, you're probably looking at a million dollars, half a million to a million dollars just to do the study. So, and, you know, but the legislature, it appears, at least the current legislature likes to see some local, not just a council resolution, but some dollars in there too, some significant dollars to move this forward.
They're taking a lot of money.
I know, I, well, I'm very induced, and I don't know where it is. I'm not saying it in my book. I'm not seeing it in my budget. But it, but so then, yes, there are challenges. I mean, the money is a big challenge. But you're, you're going to have to go through a certain process and compete. And again, I think maybe kind of forming some coalitions and supporting some stuff that might have to be downstreamed. Because everything cascades. If you, if you were successful and you got services, you would add people, which means, you know, put more people on the train in Brunswick, which means they need to add cars, maybe more service, which means, you know, bigger passing sightings, more passing sightings between there and Boston. And it's not just, this isn't an island. It will affect the services. Although, if it's successful, which we all hope it is, but everything cascades downstream, so.
Does Brunswick have taken ridership?
They, they have, depending on what was predicted. What's your opinion of good ridership? I, I think they, you know, they've averaged about hundreds. I think a hundred a day, and you're expecting about half of that.
Portland is a good example. They've had better than most.
They have. I mean, overall, the Down Easter has done better than expected. They're having a rough year this year. It's going to be ugly this year. But, but again, that's, some of it is a tough winter. Some of it's growing things. I mean, they're, they're shutting down trains because that original rehab 15 years ago is, is getting worn out. It's time to do something significant again. So in order to get an eight-dollar window, if you cruise out there and you work, it's a one-lane road. You shut down the road. So they're talking about, you know, shutting down their midday trains for a month or two this spring. And, you know, so that works a major significant shutdown. Last year with work and also work in Massachusetts on a big bridge in Lawrence, which, which where they lost a lot of trains. And ridership unhappy customers, all that. But again, it's, you got to remember, for, for the most part, this is a one-lane road to here, near Boston. So you got to work. You got to dodge trains, which is very expensive if you guys in and out of there. You got to, you got to shut down services and bus people around.
So Nathan, from a regional standpoint, you would recommend hopping on the City of Augusta?
That would be my recommendation. I don't know if there's any kind of appetite. I, I just think that's, that's a better way to compete and get folks' attention on this. Because again, we, you know, we're talking about expanded service to Rockland, Lewis and Auburn, you know, Bethel, Montreal, Augusta. I know I'm missing some Freiburg, you know, you, you name it, everybody wants to go. Everybody wants to train, which is great. But, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of competition. And, and I just, if there is a way for folks, even beyond that, to kind of coalesce and realize, okay, here's what the priorities are and work together and work towards the goal. Because I think some of these things compete and legislatures and others sometimes just kind of throw up their hands and say, okay, I can't decide if, if, you know, people getting to Lewis and Auburn is more important than Waterville towards Rockland or, you know. That, those are, those are tough decisions, and it's very political. And, you know, the money runs out a lot of the fastest and they're good ideas.
I think you hit the nail on the head. A lot of it is political. And a lot of it is financial vacuum. But hopefully, the legislature will pull it, you know, Passage Rail will eventually come to the capital city. And definitely branch out, you know. I hope. There's still light at the end of the tunnel for a study. So that's something that, you know, in reference to you being, being given some information. I appreciate you being here today, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming to that resolution to adopt. Okay.